Much obliged, my lord. May I seek to answer the question that my lord, Lord Justice Peter Jackson, posed to me, which I put off, which was the question as to whether the facts in the Ali case were similar to our facts? And the position is as follows, that in three of the cases there are similarities, that is to say, large families, large accommodation wanted either left in or placed in accommodation, which they asserted was unsuitable in terms of size. So those similarities exist. I use that answer, if I may, to take me to a further point touching upon Ali again, which was canvassed before the short adjournment, and which may be of some significance in considering the approach of Baroness Hale. And I do this, if I may, referentially, rather than my, so to speak, reading out the text. If you look at paragraph 24 of Ali in Baroness Hale, you will see some description of facts, which includes the proposition that for certain of the, I'll call them claimants, there was unsuitability of accommodation up to about a week or so before the House of Lords heard the case. So that when one has in mind paragraphs 49 and 50, and one has to bear in mind that one is dealing with a circumstance whereby Baroness Hale had before her those in a precisely similar position to ones with which we're concerned, that is to say, people who weren't in suitable accommodation. And I want to use that as a further touchstone to bring to your lordships' attention a further point on suitability of accommodation, which is this, where I will, if I may, take your lordships to the relevant section, which is in volume one of the authorities bundle at page 120, section 210, where your lordships will see that subsection one tells us what the local planning, the local housing authority should have regard to in considering a question of suitability. But subsection two...
So, sorry, wait, wait.
...pick upon, my lord, it's page 120, behind flag seven in volume one. And this is the 1996 Act at section 210. The first subsection tells us what the local housing authority should have regard to, but the second subsection tells us that the Secretary of State can order, by order specify, circumstances in which accommodation is or is not to be regarded as suitable for a person. My lord, he has so ordered in certain instances, in particular that for a family, bed and breakfast beyond six weeks is not to be regarded as suitable. And the reason why I draw this to your lordships' attention is because of the discussion prior to the short adjournment of suitability of accommodation contrast with some accommodation, but not bearing that label, suitable, reasonableness of the local authority. And so your lordships will readily appreciate that one can have a circumstance where either what once upon a time might have been regarded as suitable comes by order to be regarded as unsuitable, Secretary of State by order. Alternatively, if one's got six weeks for the family and bed and breakfast, but one travels beyond the six weeks because one simply can't find anywhere other outside that, after that six-week period for a while, then one is in the world of unsuitability. But I would still say we would be in the category of reasonableness, because that's just the way that it has happened, without any fault on the part of the local housing authority whatsoever.
So if you put somebody into bed and breakfast for six weeks, after six weeks it ceases to be suitable. Is your case, they don't have to do anything, saying that within a reasonable time they must give them something, or must something else be done on day one of week seven?
No, my case is that, in actual fact, throughout that time, but also on day one of week seven, the local housing authority is subject to the duty under 1932, which duty requires them reasonably to proceed. And as far as that is concerned, to take your lordships' day one of the seventh week illustration, on that day, they would have to, and they would have to continue to ask and answer this question, is what we're doing, or not doing by omission, a reasonable step in the course of looking after, I use the non-statutory language, this particular family, bearing in mind we have to ask and answer that question in the context of Birmingham, with all its difficulties that we have read about?
So there may be circumstances in which they could reasonably say, well, you've had six weeks in bed and breakfast, we've got difficulties, it'll take us at least another 10 or 20 weeks to get anything else, and you don't have anything at all now?
Oh, my lord, in terms of the local authority in that circumstance saying, please give us back the key to the bed and breakfast, or something of that sort, no, 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 one's not saying...
Oh.
One's not saying that, all one's saying is that one's got this six-week period which comes to an end, the local authority, the local housing authority, have or may have been scrabbling around to the best of their ability in that six-week period to try and find something, have failed to do it. And on day one of the seventh week, the family just continues where they are, but it's now categorized as unsuitable.
Unsuitable, okay, so they stay in unsuitable.
But they're staying in unsuitable. But our position in terms of reasonableness has not altered, and it's just a demonstration here, that it must be the case, I would respectfully say, that one doesn't read into it, one just accepts that the duty is touched by reasonableness. For if it were otherwise, you would have these very arbitrary steps being taken, which could occur without any reference back to the housing authority, or where it played out absolutely perfectly well in the hours of Scilly, but not in Birmingham, or vice versa. So, my lord, I put section 210, therefore, into that consideration as far as suitability and the base that it provides. My lord, I mentioned before the short adjournment that there was another pair of cases in the Court of Appeal. What I'm going to do, if it's acceptable to the court, is simply refer your lordships to those cases, without my saying, please take them up, and I will now take your lordships to these paragraphs. But if I just refer them to your lordships, and your lordships will have the opportunity, if needs be, to see them, because I use them to support the proposition that Lord Justice Old was supported in the material part by those decisions. They are Sheridan, which is flag 47 in the volume second bundle of authorities, and I particularly draw attention to paragraphs 1, 32, 35, 39, and...
I don't get it.
I'm so sorry, my lord.
1, 32.
32, 35, 39, and 53 of Lord Justice Patton's judgment. The Slattery case is at flag 48 in the same volume, page 758. And there, I draw particular attention to the judgment at paragraphs 29, 30, and 32. Yes, my lord, I'm much obliged. Now, my lord, the position that obtains in this case is that the judge below didn't follow those cases to which I've been drawing attention, but rather relied upon a decision by Mr. Justice Linden in a case called M, and that's at volume 1, 2?
I'm sorry, I'm not some...
I'm so sorry, my lord.
...inviting you to take us to Sheridan and Slattery, if you think they are merely confirmatory. But is this the position that... You're, I think you accepted there was at least a dispute as to whether or not Lord Justice Old's observations at paragraph 38 in Codona were binding? In fact, I think you accepted they weren't. Are you, you're not suggesting that Sheridan and Slattery are any more binding than Codona?
No, 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 all I'm saying is that Sheridan and Slattery can be seen as endorsements of Lord Justice Old, but that doesn't answer the question as to whether what Lord Justice Old said, in particular the sentence referable to duty, constitutes part of the ratio of that case. I can't take that beyond that, and I don't want to take something which I properly ought not to do.
No, 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 no need to apologize, I just want to be sure. Okay, that's fine, so, so sorry, yeah.
Yeah, the case that she, Mrs. Justice Stane, relied upon was a case called M, which is volume three. Now, once again, my lord, in the height of the observation that what your lordships will be most interested in are decisions at a level higher than the High Court, I wasn't proposing to travel through, it was a lengthy judgment by that learned judge, but I wasn't proposing to do that. But what I would like to do is to give you five points in connection with it, which I say undermine what Mr. Justice Linden said. These are as follows. Neither Sheridan nor Slattery is referred to by the judge. Second, he put on one side Mr. Justice Moses and Mr. Justice Jarrett, who had been to similar effect with Mr. Justice Moses, namely, time was allowed. He third discounted what Lord Justice Old had said, and took no proper account of the fact that Lord Justice Old was speaking, as we have seen, of the duty under 1932. Fourth, he preferred the approach of Lady Justice Arden. And fifth, he took Baroness Hale as saying that section 1932, contrary to Lord Tovon Scott, was immediate in its execution. So the consequence of all that consideration of the cases is that I respectfully say to your lordships that we are either bound by, or it's highly persuasive, at the very least, the position taken by Lord Justice Old, supported by directly two members of the Judicial Committee of the House of Lords, with a third not discounting that, but recognizing the importance of the passage of time. I also say, once again, I'm going to do this referentially, that the guidance, which is statutory, which is given, supports our approach. The guidance is to be found in...
Volume one?
Volume one, and I refer to, or ask your lordships to note, page 191, 15.2e, page 200, 15.46, and following, which is all to do with, please give the applicants a reasonable time to consider what you're doing and offering, and page 203, 16.8.
What was the second one?
Page 200, 15.46, and following. And when your lordship comes to look at those paragraphs, your lordship will see, these are to do with when the local authority is considering making an offer, or making an offer to somebody or other, please give them plenty of time to go round and have a look, I put it all very crudely, to see whether that's going to be satisfactory for the applicant. And so if the position is one whereby reasonable time can be expended, that's absolutely in accordance with that position. My lord, I was going to...
Could I just check something you said a moment ago? I had understood you to be saying that Codena was binding on us for a duty that should be satisfied reasonably?
Yes.
Binding upon us, not just relevant to our consideration, but binding upon us?
Yes, I, I do...
I don't want you to repeat it, it's just that I thought you answered differently to my lord a moment ago.
No, well, I suspect I probably did, all on the basis of... I say that, that's the primary position, but obviously, if that is thought not to be the position, then I say, well, this is must be, highly persuasive, as per one...
I'm so sorry, I think it is my fault, I didn't mean to put words into your mouth. If I had put to you that Codena, you accepted, wasn't binding, I think what I meant, that these cases didn't add anything. But suppose we weren't with you on that, I think that was really my point. You're not suggesting that if Codena isn't binding, Sheridan and Slattery nevertheless are?
No, my lord, I don't think I could properly say to your lordships, your lordships having determined that Codena on that hypothesis is not binding, that Slattery in the other case somehow or other bring up the rear and enable that to be overcome. I don't think I could properly say that to the court.
The only problem with that, I've only looked very quickly at Slattery, and that seems to be the Court of Appeal's interpretation of what Lord Justice Old was saying, which might not have immediately let out as one as to what he was saying. So it may not be as clear-cut as you're suggesting because of that last couple of paragraphs in Slattery.
Well, my lord, it's, yes, I suspect your lordship is right, and in a sense, one can go round and round this particular matter in quite a few circles.
But if Codena says either A or B, and a later Court of Appeal decision says, in fact, it means B, then aren't we bound by that, to read it as meaning B?
Yes, well, yes, is the answer, the straight answer. But, I mean, the reason why I'm tentative about this is because I can't point to your lordships in Slattery and say, look here, there was clearly identified for the Court of Appeal, you must decide between these two interpretations of what Lord Justice Old said. I can't, I think, honestly, accept...
Well, you don't, you don't need to say that. If, I'm not telling you what you should say, I just don't want there to be any misunderstanding here. Perfectly reasonable position for you to say, I've looked at them, and I don't think they're binding. But if what Lord Justice Old said isn't binding, that doesn't necessarily mean that Slattery may not be subsequently, because they could have taken a view about what Lord Justice Old said, which may not be right, but which nevertheless what they applied and relied on for their ratio, in which case it would be our ratio too, so it would be binding on us. So I just think you need to be clear what you are and are saying. You're trying to say, well, maybe, maybe not.
No, well, my lord, I wouldn't ever want to say that.
No, all right, I'm sorry, it was a shorthand, you know what I mean.
Could I ask you what your submissions are about paragraph 32 of Slattery, page 767, in case I misread it? Because it was over lunch, between a sandwich and a banana, so I wasn't paying much attention perhaps.
Well, my lord, my submissions as to that paragraph would be...
Sorry, just a minute, while I, yeah, that's 32. Do we have to run up through section 2, through 31? After, after the quotation in person, when we see the submission?
Yes, I mean, Mr. Offord submitted it.
Yes, so we can read it for ourselves, but shall we, shall we look at 31 and 32?
Speaking for myself, I would like to read from 29 to 34, it won't take long. I'm afraid didn't use my lunch to read this. Yes, thank you.
Uh, what? Sorry, please now answer my lord's question.
Yes, my lord, Lord Justice Lewis asked me to submit in connection with paragraph 32, as to what it is that we, the opponents, say. And there are two options, whether it relates directly to the duty point, or whether it relates to a wider point. And I would say, being reminded of this paragraph, and recognizing that I was attempting to take perhaps a shortcut earlier on, that this is directly concerned with the duty. And if that is so, the position is one whereby this case, Slattery in Basildon, leads to, that particular matter being a determining feature of that case, leading to your lordships being bound by this case, whatever the position may be with regards to Lord Justice Old.
Is paragraph 82 then the high point of your, we are bound submission?
Yes, yes, absolutely.
Of all of these cases?
Of those two, yes.
Well, of all of the cases, in terms of what might be binding upon us?
Yes, I, that would be so, my lord, yes.
So just remember what we do in the final single. If you're right about Slattery, and if we come to the view that the majority in the House of Lords in Ali does not address this issue, so there isn't a decision of the House of Lords, and there is the majority in the Court of Appeal in Ais, we're bound to prefer this one, are we? Over the later inconsistent decision in Ais, or however it's pronounced?
Yes.
Or is it that the later inconsistent decision takes priority?
No, I would say that the case that we've just been looking at, the Slattery case, would be the one which holds the day as far as that is concerned.
Well, can we just take it in stages? Speaking for myself, and it's the first time I've looked at it, I would have thought that 32 has the same ambiguity as 38 in Codona. It says, in such, the court will give the housing authority a reasonable period of time. But does that mean give it, in finding there wasn't a breach of the duty, or won't grant mandatory relief? It's ambiguous.
Well, my lord, that was the, when I responded to my lord, Lord Justice Lewis, the option. And I, you expect the address for the option which provides for the duty, rather than otherwise, especially when one bears in mind the preceding text as to what Count Sale was talking about, Mr. Offord. Now, my lord, one can't get out of this text more than it actually says. And I was perhaps wrongly endeavoring to take a bit of a shortcut as far as these two cases are concerned. But as I say, I would respectfully say that they do have that effect, which I've just admitted, and I would also add to that that the subsequent Court of Appeal decision in the case which went to the House of Lords was not, is not one which should, so to speak, override the Slattery position.
Well, we'll have to look at these, I mean, at the moment, but... Well, I think, I think your first, your first approach to them was the, was a realistic one, but... Well, let's leave them for the time being, there's certainly more you want to say.
No, there's no more that I want to say.
We'll, we'll have to read them, that. And we may also have to consider the point that my lord makes, that... What is the, what is, let us suppose the House of Lords didn't decide the point in Ali, whether we're bound by what the Court of Appeal said? In Ais, which is Ali under another name?
Yes, my lord. Well, my lord, I move from that to the third oral submission, which I forecast this morning, which is that the planned move list is no more than a list to assist the council. And, my lord, I'm going to deal with this, if I may, as I will with some other matters, with a degree of pace and with reference to document, because I've got that eye on the clock. The position here is, what we say is that the declaration that was made can be seen in the Court bundle of 52 to 53.
One moment. Yes, yeah, thank you.
Unlawful system for the performance of the housing duty in particular, I don't read on. We say these things, these. First, that it has not been said, nor could it be said, that merely having a list is a fulfillment of an obligation to secure accommodation. Second, the list is simply a means to record applicants and how they are or were... Second, the list is simply a means to record applicants and how they are or were treated. It does not in fact operate as a queuing system, and it does not in fact irrationally fail to distinguish between persons in different types of accommodation, suitable or unsuitable. Third, the list is fully explained in the evidence of Marcia Bell, although please notice that questions about the planned move list were not matters which, to put the matter at its lowest, had a source of focus from the grounds which were used to advance the application for judicial review below. And the material about Marcia Bell, you will find in the Al Shamiri supplementary bundle at page one hundred and thirteen. At page one hundred and twenty-seven is where the second statement begins. And I would like, in drawing your attention to this evidence, to refer first to page one hundred and thirty-nine, which is a one-sentence paragraph, which refers to what might be thought to be an obvious but important fact, that the planned move list is updated daily and is very fluid.
So, well, you haven't told us the paragraph.
Paragraph forty-five, page one three-nine. And the planned move list is in fact nothing more than what one would either, if one had a very good memory, seek to memorize, but in the absence of that, is required to be put down on a piece of paper here through a computer system. And if your lordships then go back in the bundle, your lordships will see at page one two nine, something is said about the Birmingham context, and the lordships just glancing at those paragraphs will see the huge numbers.
Just look at the judge.
Yes, or involved. And then at page thirteen, page one three-oh, paragraph thirteen, the experience being reflected in the homelessness figures for Birmingham. And then if your lordships go on to the process, and this is to do with those to whom temporary accommodation is being provided. So that, page one three-six, one thirty-seven, an applicant presents as homeless, their details are loaded onto a particular database. If temporary accommodation is required, then the position is one whereby the person's application is marked as needing a planned move, because obviously one has to plan for moves, and then one finds the accommodation. Thirty-nine, if it's required immediately, steps are taken. Paragraph forty, when into bed and breakfast, you immediately start to look for self-contained accommodation. And then forty-one, main housing duty comes to be owed, will usually stay until the duty is discharged. And then what happens, the way in which paragraph forty-three, one three-seven, the council keeps track of the number of people who need to move, is to keep a list with a variety of headings. And then if you go to one three-nine, every morning, paragraph forty-six, there's a list of void properties. Empty properties checked as being fit to let. Then the officers match those properties on the, match those properties to those on the list. If someone has a match. Forty-eight, once a match has been made, the person is contacted and offered the property. Whilst my team tries to work with the people in date order, there are some exceptions. These can include circumstances. Nothing to do with the allocation process for long-term accommodation, and is only used as an internal document for temporary accommodation. I would like to explain that putting an applicant on the planned move list doesn't mean that the accommodation they are currently occupied is considered to be unsuitable immediately, or even in the short, medium term. Only means we've decided to seek more suitable accommodation. And then I don't need to read on.
Paragraph fifty-two is something that the judge took with his time on.
Yes, and there, the deponent records...
Yes, we, well, we can see what's...
Yeah.
We can see what's there, but you're complaining about being found that this was, was an unlawful means of carrying out your duties. It does, I'm bound to say, seem extraordinary that the largest housing authority in the country doesn't have a policy document in relation to how these matters are carried out, because if you did, then unless it was unlawful, then you wouldn't be facing these sorts of wasteful challenges.
Yes, subject to this point, my lord, if I may, that what I respectfully suggest has happened here is that more has been attributed to the planned move list than it actually can bear, in the sense of it's been attributed as having certain functions and roles, whereas what it really is, as described by the deponent, is a list of people in a given circumstance, and the...
Understand, understand, the planning list intended to be an administrative aid memoir.
That's right.
So that your officers can, can operate in an orderly way, but it nevertheless, as a document, it needs a statement, which you've just taken us through, to explain what happens. And the members of the public who are affected by it don't have a policy to which they can refer and say, ah, that's how they do it. So to the extent that you've ended up with a finding against you, one might have thought that you're blaming yourselves to blame, but, I mean, why, is this sort of thing not important enough to be put in a short document saying, this is how we operate the system?
Well, my lord, it may be that could be done, but the point I wanted to make in response to your lordship's observation is that, in terms of those on the list and those within part seven, the position and the obligation owed to each as a matter of law is the same. It's the one-nine-three-two position, assuming you are there. And it doesn't have, and part seven doesn't provide for, the circumstance which is provided for in part six, where you have a policy as far as allocations are concerned, in which policy you give, in the terms of part six, some priority to those who are homeless. So the contrast between the two parts of the legislation, and the second part, as I say, has this obligation which is owed to all, which we say, of course, is variable in terms of its implementation according to individual circumstances. And so that provides at least part of the rationale as to why one doesn't find in the papers that we have before the court, a kind of policy document that your lordship has been considering. It's because of the like obligation owed to all, and then the list provides for that to be dealt with, because the five-bedroom property on the Monday morning becomes available, and so that's then dealt with according to those people who slot into that particular regime.
The difficulty is, Mr. Drake, it's not just the number of people. Suitability involves the needs of that people, and if you've got two disabled children who can't go up to the top floor of a sixth-floor block where there's a five-room flat, they're not necessarily in the same position as somebody with two healthy teenagers. So they may need the same number of rooms, but where the flat is and the needs of the individuals may also be part of the suitability equation. So although it's the same legal duty, that which is suitable in one case is going to be very different from the other. And reading this, the only factor that seems to be taken into account is, one, how long have you been on the list, two, how many bedrooms, and three, have there been adaptation which takes care of, one hopes, people with disabilities? But it seems to leave out of the equation lots of other things that one might have thought was relevant to suitability.
Well, my lord, I would suggest that the, well, the narrow approach that your lordship has put to me doesn't actually reflect the position on analysis. First of all, in terms of the list which has been made, your lordship has seen a number of witness statements brought forward to explain actually what was going on, because a whole load was arising ex-improviso during the course of the hearing, to explain what was happening. And various columns in terms of the document which were first put in have been then discovered to have been omitted, because no doubt an A3 document was copied as A4 or something like that. And so, and the situation is not quite, in my respectful submission as your lordship can have it, and we have to remember that for all of these people, there has to have been an exercise which is undertaken, which involves a determination as to what is your position, priority need, not priority need, what are your characteristics and so forth, in order to be able to get that. So that when the position comes through, when someone sends a message to the effect that actually these three properties have now become available, and so you can utilise them for people on the list, the ability is present for those charged with the exercise to be able to take account of precisely the sort of thing which your lordship has mentioned, namely, a difficulty that might be experienced by some in gaining access to accommodation at a advanced height. So that one has that, and in my respectful submission, your lordship ought to be very, very careful before condemning the list as a, either a quasi-policy which omits certain matters, or as an approach which fails to take account of individual circumstances, because it's a list of individuals who then come to be considered individually against properties which may sometimes come available.
That's not what this says, it does say that you can make exceptions, paragraph forty-nine, and the two examples given are whether the police require an immediate move or there's a mandatory order. I just don't see anything in the paragraphs you've just taken to us that includes the particular needs of the members of the family on the list that are taken into account. I'm just looking at what you've read to us.
Yes, my lord, I mean, your lordship is right to say, well, that's what that says, but we try to work...
It is your evidence.
My lord, yes, but they try to work with the people in date order, there are some exceptions. And so you work with the people in date order, but you look at, because you're trying to match property to people, and matching property with people requires, see paragraph forty-seven, see whether the property is a match. Now, my lord, in my respectful submission, the person who can't access a sixth floor when one's doing an exercise to see if it's a match, one does not match that person with that property. And so the fact that we haven't spelt all that out, my lord...
You've got, but you've got, there's an attack on your policy. I know you say it came up...
Yeah.
...in an unexpected way, and we can't go into all that now, it's not a ground of appeal, but a great deal of evidence was placed before the judge, and you've got to stand or fall by the evidence. And, and it's worse than that in a way from your point of view, because it was for the judge as the primary fact-finder to find out how, to find how the system worked, and she went over it in enormous detail, the paragraphs eighty to one hundred and twelve, carefully trying to work out, more than twelve, actually goes further up to, I think, one hundred and... Many paragraphs, and she reached conclusions about how it worked, which were the basis of her finding that it was irrational, based on a misunderstanding of the law, and contrary to the section one four-nine of the two thousand and ten Act. You have got to say that those primary findings of fact were not open to her on the evidence. Yet all you seem to be able to say is, well, the evidence doesn't give a full picture. Well, that's not...
Well, no, I don't say the evidence doesn't give a full picture, I say that the picture is present, and the picture has been referred to, albeit in abbreviated form by me just now, in terms of the Marcia Bell witness statement, and then that was further updated in the course of the hearing. But I don't say that that's the position, but the circumstance, of course, is one whereby the evidence that the city of Birmingham had tendered is not suggested in any shape or form to have been dishonestly tendered, and it's the evidence which the court has to act upon. And I respectfully say that it does not support the proposition that...
Well, I think what would help me is if you went through the, there are five criticisms at paragraphs, in fact, there are seven criticisms at paragraphs three oh seven to three oh nine. That's, that's the judge's reasoning. If you're going to say that reasoning is based on factual findings which are not supported by the evidence, it would help me to identify the respects in which you say that is so. Not all of these points are factual. For example, the first one at three oh seven is based on her decision on ground one.
Yes.
But you've, you've so far just been making some very general submissions, you haven't actually done what needs to be done, which is to focus on the judge's reasoning and point out the respects in which that her conclusions were not open to her on the evidence, if that's the way you're putting it.
Well, my lord, if one takes short those paragraphs, omitting paragraph three oh seven for the reason given, we have the criticism in three oh eight, that many of the applicants are in accommodation that is unsuitable, whilst I recognize...
But we can read what it says, which of the points you're saying are wrong?
Well, I say that point is wrong, because the situation is one whereby this is not operating as, on the evidence, a waiting list for temporary accommodation to fulfil the duty, that's never been the position...
But what else do you do to fulfil the duty? What other documents, what other decision-making processes go into deciding whether or not family aid should now be moved into different accommodation? The only thing you've shown us is Marcia Bell.
My lord, yes, but my lord, if I may, the position is one whereby, the way this works is that there is a limited volume of housing available to Birmingham necessarily.
Yeah, so you have to... So you have to decide there are four houses, 10 people must have it. And the evidence you've shown, leaving aside adaptation, says, you look at the number of bedrooms, you see who's longest on the list. There are exceptions, police action and court orders. But is there anything else? Like how many, what the need is of some of the families?
You just say, it just says if you're top of the queue, you get it. Some of those, well, doesn't know what it said. You've just shown us the evidence saying that.
No, I respectfully say it doesn't say that.
Well, where, show us where it doesn't say that.
I say it doesn't say that, where it makes it play-
Show us the paragraph.
Under the heading Matching Properties, page 139 of the statement. Forty-six, forty-seven, that is the heading. And then we have the empty properties that have been checked as fit to let. And then the officers in my team manually match those properties to those on the list.
Forty-seven. They do this by identifying the number of bedrooms a property has, the area it is in, and whether it has any adaptation. Nothing there about need other than adaptations.
But my lord, you're missing, if you don't mind my saying so, the next two sentences. They will then start with the person who's been waiting on the list for the longest time-
The longest time and see whether the property is a match.
If the property has adaptations, then they will match it to the property. The person who's been on the list the longest and whose need matched that property.
Well, what does that mean? Sure, I certainly read that, I think the judge read that, as simply saying, they'll start with the person waiting on the list long enough and see whether they want a three-bedroom property or they need a three-bedroom property in small Heath. And if the answer is they do, then it's offered to them. Isn't that what it means? I said what the judge thought it meant, and I don't understand why.
Well, my lord, I respectfully say that match means match.
Well, that, yes, but-
You're matching a property with people and you're having to go through, does this match? Does this match this 10th-floor flat with no lift, an elderly couple who can't manage stairs? No, it obviously doesn't. Now, my lord, we couldn't, in my respectful submission, sensibly produce evidence which said, this is what we do in every single circumstance where touching upon people who can't get to the 10th floor.
Look, but you could have something which says more than, we start with the person who's been waiting on the list and with paragraph 49, whilst my team tries to work with the people in date order. You could have a sentence saying, this is a difficult and complex exercise. We look at, for example, the number of bedrooms needed, the needs of the family, the length of time they've been on the list. But the way it reads is, you look at bedrooms and area and possibly adaptations, see who's been there the longest, match them up unless there's some sort of exceptional reason.
Well, my lord, it's plainly how one reads this particular material. But I would respectfully urge upon your lordship that that's not actually the way in which it should be read when one looks at it in terms of, first of all, what are we doing numerically? One knows the numbers are very big, so I'm not going to recite all the individual circumstances. What one is trying to do is to secure the match. And the match will embrace a list of things which would be actually difficult to identify in the abstract because individual circumstances are so variable. And it must be remembered, my lord, that we are here dealing with a list of those in temporary accommodation, which may be for a short period of time. And the situation is not one whereby one can embark upon anything, in my respectful submission, other than this individualised exercise, touching upon the matching arrangements which I referred to. My lord, I'm not sure I can really take that matter much further than that. Yeah, I mean, size and location will always be important issues and those are, they're taken into account.
Of course, everybody agrees that, that's what she says. But your, the criticism of you is that they are all that is taken into account. And you say, oh, no, lots else is taken into account, it's just too difficult to explain what? But that's not how the judge read it.
No, and I respect-
Are you accepting that if this is all that was taken into account, the approach would be unlawful?
If the only thing taken into account is the location-
No, the number of bedrooms, the location, and whether it has any adaptations. And after that, it just goes by length of time you've been on the queue. Are you accepting that if that is all that it was, it would be unlawful?
I wouldn't actually accept that would be unlawful. And I'll tell your lordship why I wouldn't accept that was unlawful, by May. Because the position is one whereby we say to the individual, this is the circumstance, this is where we would like you to go. The individual, whether in accordance with the guidance or otherwise, takes the time to say, I'd like to have a look at that, that's no good to me, this is okay. And then if, assuming it's not all right, as far as the applicant is concerned, is able to review that.
But, sorry, isn't, the problem is not with the person who is offered it and doesn't like it. The problem is the people who aren't offered it. The person who has a much greater need for it but has been on the list less long, isn't offered it because the person to whom it's offered first does like it. That's what the judge thought was unlawful.
Well, then that does two things, my lord. First of all, it introduces something which is not present in the scheme of the legislation.
Suitability?
No, my lord, it introduces a prioritisation for those people who've come forward in the category that my lord has suggested. And that's not in part seven, is in part six. And furthermore, it fails to notice that the position is one whereby circumstances of individuals can and are taken into account. So that you have a situation whereby you have a regime which operates and you have this list which facilitates that operation. But I wouldn't, with the greatest respect, say that it is to be condemned because it produces the result which your lordship has mentioned. And indeed, Lady Hale in Ahmed makes it plain that for making arrangements, you can have a list which is based in part at least upon time.
No, that's not, that's not the issue. The criticism is that it's based only on time, apart from those three very basic criteria.
Yes, but my lord, that overlooks, if I may say so, the point that I've been labouring, and no doubt very unsatisfactorily, as far as the matching which is required to be made. And it-
No, but sorry, you're slipping from one part of the argument to another. I was asking you, you're part of your case is that this 47 gives an incomplete picture of the exercise. Fine, we looked at that. You say other factors are taken into account. I then asked, if these were the only factors that were taken into account, would it be unlawful? Because I was trying to establish whether it was only the fact that you were saying other factors were taken into account that rendered it lawful. I was half expecting you'd say, yes, if it was only that, it would be unlawful, but it isn't. But you said, no, no, even if it was only that, it would be lawful. So don't slip back into the first bit of the argument. I would like to know, focus on, if it was only this, would it be unlawful? You say, no, no, it would be lawful, but why?
Well, I say it would be lawful because the scheme under part seven does not provide for any particular form of allocation.
No, I understand that, but you have got, but as soon as you are in the position of saying, it's not a duty, it has to be satisfied immediately, that effectively it can take as long as it reasonably takes. Built into that requirement of reasonableness is some system of giving those who have a greater need a greater priority. Not because of a scheme of prioritisation, which as you say is peculiar to part six, but because of what's inherent in the concept of reasonableness.
Yes.
Otherwise, you may get someone who's on the list in plainly unsuitable property for years.
But my lord, that is to overlook, if I may respectfully say so, the fact that the individual characteristics of an individual applicant under this regime are and can be and should be considered. And in terms of that exercise, that is actually what happens.
So your answer is it is all in the first part of the question, matching necessarily involves looking at the needs of individual families. And if they don't look at the needs of individual families, it would be unlawful?
Well, yes, I would say in answer to that, that what you've got to do is to try as reasonably as you can to fulfil your duty which is equally owed to all. And you can do that by reasonably making a decision which says, you are wheelchair-bound and therefore surface level is required. You are mobile and therefore second floor is okay. And you can do that. And one doesn't need, with the greatest respect, anything else in connection with the matter.
Could I just ask if we could look very briefly? Because it seems to me to give some context to this issue. In the judgment of paragraph 83, which we didn't look at, the judge refers to the statement of one of your officers which included the draft housing policy. And it's VP 5, which is an exhibit to Miss Pumphrey's witness statement in the Alcundi case. If it's easy to find in Alcundi supplementary bundle?
Yes, my lord, and perhaps in the Alcundi supplementary-
Page 18.
Yes.
What we have in... This is the policy that we've accepted from Miss Bell, was never got beyond the draft stage. But this is a six-page document of exactly the sort of nature that one might expect and that people might find helpful in both understanding their rights and in understanding how the lawyers are understanding the situation. And if we go through that, you will see, for example, paragraph seven on page 22, we have planned moves and 7-1. I just want to make sure that you have the reference before I-
Thank you very much.
So we're here towards the back end of an eight-page document. And you might well say that this isn't very sophisticated or it isn't determinative. But one sees here in a policy document setting out the way in which the local authority will go about making its allocations. And I think that's what led to my initial observation about the trouble that you've got yourselves into by not having such an elementary, public-facing document to show how you go about your allocation process. There it is, but it for some reason wasn't adopted.
Yes, and that's explained in the evidence. Well, my lords, it's, in a sense, as far as the council is concerned, heads you win, tails you lose, because the position is one whereby part seven doesn't permit of anything other than the individual obligations owed, which I've explained. You have the allocations policy under part six, which in fact gives some reasonable priority to the homeless. You deal with the homeless in terms of their circumstances necessarily individually. And you enter into an exercise whereby you could have, let it be supposed, an exercise such as the one that your lordship has drawn to my attention. And then you run the risk, which is dealt with in part by what Baroness Hale said in the Ahmed case, which is to be found in volume two of the authorities, at tab 43. Forty-two, a bigger part. Where if you look at page 642, your lordship will see against letter C, the troubles that any judicial decision bases is bound to be on the facts of the particular case. The greater weight is given, should be given to one factor or to a particular accumulation of factors, means that lesser weight will have to be given to other factors.
Sorry, you-
I'm so much fault, my lord.
Well, you said page 642, you didn't say where.
Oh, letter C, my lord.
Letter C, I'm so sorry, yeah, thank you. Right it. Yes, you carry on.
Yeah, and then the court is in no position to rewrite the whole policy into weigh the claims of the multitude who are not before the court against the claims of the few who are. Furthermore, relative needs may change over time. So if the council were really to be assessing the relative needs of individual households, it would have to hold regular reviews of every household on the waiting list in order to identify those increasing needs as vacancies arose. No one is suggesting that this sort of refinement is required. And then she says in a passage which I hope I'll be reminded of, paragraph 16, is it? Yes, at letter F on the same page, where she's referring to, not irrational to have a policy which give priority to some tightly-defined groups and really urgent needs and rank the rest of the reasonable preference group by how long they've been waiting. It's not irrational. These definitions are, of course, open to criticism. And no doubt when the council come to rewrite their policy, they'll give careful thought. Not for the courts to pick detailed holes in the definitions which the council have chosen. The council will decide. And so here we have a circumstance where what has happened is that the operation of a list has been explained to the judge. And she has made those criticisms to which attention has been drawn. But the position is one, when I respectfully say, it really was not a matter where one should have been going down that line at all. That can't be right, can it?
What do you mean, you shouldn't have been going down that line? Suppose they'd had, which I'm sure they did, but suppose they'd had an absolutely crazy policy whereby they picked them up by the letters of the alphabet or something. You're saying the court shouldn't look at that?
No.
But so you've got to look, and you've got to look as though it's been done reasonably, and deciding whether it's reasonable, you have got to respect that the council's judgment of what is reasonable is, must be given enormous weight, because they know about this and the courts don't. I accept all of that, but there's got to be some limits on that, and the question is whether the judge's criticisms here went beyond, or sorry, were the sorts of criticisms that a court ought not make. At the moment, I don't quite see why you say that.
Well, to go back to your lordship's example, so one only selects people whose name begins with the letter S, plainly that's an irrational exercise to take. But if one is exercising it according to what may be described as broad parameters which can be seen through the operation of the planned move list as here given, if one is trying to do something further with that, one is embarking upon the very exercise which I say should be avoided by the court. That is to say, we, the court, are going to tell you how to manage your list. And that is where I say, actually, she ends up, this is Justice Stain in the way that she approaches this matter, I am going to tell you how you should be dealing with these particular matters. It's not the red-headed league being identified as those who should be selected. It is an altogether straightforward explanation of properties come, we seek a match, and we look first at those who are on date order, but that's not operated in any sense of arbitrary position. And in any event, Baroness Hale says it's perfectly sensible to have such an exercise.
What you say, if the duty is a duty to find suitable accommodation within a reasonable period of time, what's reasonable is a matter for the authority, and if they choose to do it by date order, subject to any other queries, then it's a matter for them, and if some people have to wait longer, even if their needs are greater, it doesn't matter, because you're entitled to say reasonable time, and you're entitled to take a strict view, the longer you've waited, that's the factor you give greatest priority to.
Most certainly, my lord, most certainly. And you contest that by saying, is that the right way that one should proceed? By asking another question in connection with this, which bears upon management for the local housing authority. Suppose that the exercise in terms of date order is regarded as unsatisfactory by some. The answer to it is to call to account the council who put that in place so that those who live in that area can say to the councillors, at election time or otherwise, "We call this into account. We don't think this is right because..." And you, the council, should operate this differently. The council might put out, but then indicate that, well, there will be financial considerations concerned, and you, please, should bear that in mind in pressing for this alteration. And that would be a perfectly legitimate way to proceed, similar to the way in which, if your lordship recollects this case when Lord Hoffman decided that the way in which internal matters should be determined in terms of a house should be determined by the councils, not by the courts saying, "You must remove the arrangements downstairs so as to secure wash-hand basins in the lavatories." Said, "No, that's a matter whereby it should be left in the hands of parliament," that was the Oatley case. So it's perfectly in accord with a sensible way to see these things, because they all bear upon the public sphere.
Can I summarise where I think we've got to? I'm sure it's my fault, but I, when you started making submissions on this area, what you appeared to be saying is that the evidence wasn't, didn't justify a conclusion that all they went by was the three objective factors, size of property, area, and presence of adaptations, and after that it was just length of time. And that was not what happened at all, that there was a more sophisticated analysis of needs, it's just it didn't get spelt out in the evidence. But actually, where we've ended up is that it's perfectly defensible to have a system of the kind which the judge found that you did have. Why, you just those three broad criteria and then waiting list. Are you comfortable with that? If you are, then I know exactly what the issue is.
No, I'm perfectly comfortable with that, my lord, because I am saying that the evidence is properly understood, produces the circumstance described. But moreover, the position is one whereby, as the exchange between me and my lord, Lord Justice Lewis, has just been to that effect, you can operate it in these ways.
One thing that I'm not yet understanding is your suggestion that this wasn't closely formulated in the preparatory steps for this litigation. Just looking at, for example, at the Ahmed JR form, which is in the core bundle. One sees at page three-nine-five, ground two. Unlawful informal policy. Then after those bits of authority, paragraphs thirty, and so on. And that appears to be taken up, and I'm not, because of the nature of my bundles, entirely clear what case it's in. But if you were to go forward to five-oh-two, which is one of your responses, I'm not sure, going back, in which case it is. At five-oh-two, paragraph forty, unlawful policy. And you say that that wasn't the policy, there's a move-on list, a list of homeless applicants, paragraph forty-three, and on it goes. Obviously, we're not talking here about the substance of what's intended here, but I'm just puzzled by the suggestion that this wasn't a formulated claim. Of course, as matters went on, it seems as if the attention honed in on the spreadsheet as being the only standing document to evidence the witness statement of this bell, once the policy had gone. So how is it that you say this wasn't a... I know it's not a ground of appeal, but it seems as if this was heralded from the outset as one of the complaints about the way in which you had managed the list.
I suspect that that's best explained in our skeleton argument, where the planned move list is dealt with between paragraph forty-nine, page thirty of the core bundle. So give me a moment, I'm just catching up. Your stones and argument before us.
Yes.
It's really paragraph fifty-two, isn't it? You're simply saying, "It's rational. If there's no obligation for immediate provision according to suitability, and it's within a reasonable period of time, you say paragraph fifty-two, it's up to us, we can decide to do it on the basis of length on the waiting list, and that's perfectly rational."
Or you can take into account length on the waiting list.
Yep.
Yes, but my lord, Lord Justice Jackson was asking about the origin of the point as to not fully pleaded. And if you look at page thirty-three, paragraph fifty-nine of the skeleton, your lordships will see that the assertion is made there about a want of pleading only advanced to a limited extent in skeletons, arose in full for the first time, et cetera. And then your lordship may have seen that, I think the last witness statement by Marcia Bell says this is tendered to provide evidence in relation to an exchange which occurred between my own friend, Mr Manning, and Mrs Justice Stain. So to answer your lordship's question as to source and origin, how this runs through, plainly there was a point being made early on which said to the effect that you, Birmingham, are simply asserting when you get a challenge that someone's in property which you can regard as simple for the time being. And then one has this development through the exercise till one gets to the hearing in front of Mrs Justice Stain, when the planned move list becomes a focus of attention and a focus of challenge. That, I think, would be the way in which I'd answer your lordship's question.
It's really the last sentence of paragraph fifty-nine, in which you're complaining that it was unjust to require you to
Yes.
respond on the hoof.
Yeah.
It depends, I suppose, how long your hoof is.
Well, it does, and my lords, one can properly say these things, and one is fully conscious of the fact that the, so to speak, the heat of the kitchen always requires a certain amount of immediate response.
Thank you.
My lord, I'm not entirely convinced that I'm going to assist the court much further in ploughing further through what I've said about the planned move list. Your lordship...
You haven't, I think, so far mentioned the challenge under section one four-nine.
The equality duty challenge, and your lordship will have noticed in terms of the judgment, that there's a complete want of particularity as to where it is and how it is, we failed as far as that is concerned. And a complete omission to bear in mind that the purpose of the equality duty obligation is to permeate through everything that the local authority does, and thus to permeate through the way in which one treats and assesses and deals with these applicants. So that in order to think about this question of, for example, priority need, one's got to have in mind the equality duty requirements, which as the court has indicated, is not an obligation to achieve a particular result.
No, quite.
But an obligation to have in mind protected characteristics and such like. So that what one, as I say, doesn't see in the judgment is what it is that we didn't think about.
Oh, well, I thought it was in paragraph three-hundred-and-ten. They give examples, including two from this case, of the fact that people on the list may have disabilities or have disabled children. And that there is, I mean, you start thirty lines down here, but there's no equality assessment, and there's no policy which shows these factors are taken into account, no written policy. But what she is clearly saying is that you need to be able to demonstrate that you take into account disabilities, and the evidence didn't suggest that you did. That's what she's saying. It may be it's really just another label to put on the point we've already been looking at, but I thought I ought to at least ask what the base on it was.
Your lordship, in terms of attribution of labels to the point that we've just been talking about, I would suggest is completely correct, because the brute fact is that we are entitled to have this list, and the brute fact is that you necessarily are going to record people's entry to it in some way or other, and a chronological way is as good as any. And that chronology, in terms of who gets on there first, is capable of being viewed as being of some value in reaching your decision. But known secret that you have somehow or rather failed to have regard to your obligations under the...
Well, surely, you would expect, I quite understand your argument, and I see the attraction of it, you've just got to have some very broad-brush criteria. And after the first three boxes are ticked, you say it's acceptable simply to have a criterion of length and time on the list. But if anyone had done an equality impact assessment, there would be a paragraph that would say, "It has to be appreciated that this will mean that families with disabled children or people with disabilities will not be treated any differently from people without disabilities, but in all the circumstances, we think that's the right policy." That you would be fine, but there's nothing to suggest the point was ever even thought about.
Well, my lord, there's a point which may be on the margins, namely that it's paper from what's been put before the court, that there's been consideration throughout of adaptations,
Yes, but not all disabilities require adaptations.
I understand that, that's why I say one can put that on the margins, but nonetheless noted. And if one then goes further forward in terms of consideration of the exercise, which I have described as and stand by as having an element of, at the very lowest, individualisation in terms of the consideration, that necessarily brings into play these matters for, in terms of the priority need categorisation, for example, one must bear in mind these matters.
Doesn't follow, if you're overcrowded, you might be overcrowded because you've got four strapping, healthy teenagers. You might be overcrowded because two of them are so disabled, they can't walk up four flights of stairs. And you can't just take a broad brush, they've all waited at the same time. We all start off at the same place in the race. Some of us are slower and need more help to get to the end. And that's what you're supposed to be thinking about on the Equality Act.
Yes, my lord, that's undoubtedly the position, but no one says, and no one could say, that somehow or other the city council in the execution of its tasks, under this, having this list in mind, is somehow or rather ignorant of the observation that your lordship just has made, namely, there's a strong contrast between a family with four healthy, strapping children and a family with four children, two of whom are chronically disabled. Strong contrast between those two circumstances. And no one says that Birmingham City Council were not alive to that difference. Birmingham City Council, I suspect, my lord, are alive to as many differences between families and individuals as there are families and individuals in Birmingham.
There's nothing to show how they take it into account, that's the difficulty with this case. That's the difficulty with this case. If two, it's not reasonable to occupy it because of the overcrowding, but some are able to get up the stairs and some are not. And it just seems nothing is all I'm saying. I'm sure Birmingham is well aware of the importance of looking at everyone's needs, but we're just wondering how it feeds through. You've given us your submission, I suppose.
Yes, oh, my lords.
You say it's so obvious, they don't even need to state it. And the fact that they've adopted a policy that state order, not date order terminated expressly by disability, doesn't matter because at the end of the day, they will have taken it into account inevitably.
Well, my lords, I quarrel with your lordship as to the categorization of the policy, but I do say that the individual aspects of this mean that the equality aspects have to have been considered and that your lordships should, with the best will in the world, not assume that the officers of Birmingham City Council are somehow ignorant of or paying any-
I think there's a risk here that it will seem as if by asking the questions we're asking, we're suggesting any sort of insensitivity or unawareness. I'm perfectly sure that people working in the housing department are acutely aware of all these issues. And I perhaps we ought to say we're acutely aware, they have a very, very difficult job. So perhaps that's worth saying. But we're talking about the systems they operate. And it's no criticism of individually to say that the system may be defective. That's what the judge found, and you've got to show us why the judge wasn't entitled to find it. But I think we have now explored that enough.
Thank you very much, my lord. And consequently, my lord, I move from the planned move list, the list perhaps I should say, from my left or on my right, I'm immediately reminded of anything further that I should say about, to the question of the mandatory orders that were made. And the actual order can be seen at paragraph ten, core bundle, page fifty-three, which says provide accommodation within twelve weeks. And one can immediately ask the question, where does the twelve week period come from? It can be seen in the judgment at paragraph three-two-two, page one-five-five, core bundle, and paragraph three-two-three, page one-five-five-six of the core bundle. But there's no derivation given for the twelve week period as to how that period was to be arrived at. And it's apparent in my respectful submission that the question of time bears on the question of management. And in fact, it seems apparent that the judge thought so, see paragraph three-two-one, page one-five-five, core bundle. Now, the skeletons below for the claimants say nothing about twelve weeks.
Is there a ground of appeal about the precise length of time? I thought this was all about your case that you shouldn't have been put under a mandatory order at all.
Oh, my lord, most certainly, my lord, but-
So what's the twelve weeks as opposed to some other number of weeks got to do with it?
Well, it's got this to do with it, my lord. If you're going to make a mandatory order, you've got to say what it is you're going to require to be done. And so you've got to put a period of time upon it. And in this context, you've got to put a period of time on it. And the point here is that there's nothing to indicate any prior discussion concern or discussion, evidence about the twelve weeks, but it bears upon the management, the same point would be-
You said bears upon the management, I'm sorry, I didn't understand what you mean.
Oh, it's, my lord, this, in terms of bears upon the management, we Birmingham City Council can make people move about in terms of the accommodation which they are in. I'm not talking about tenants, I'm talking about those to whom some housing is provided along the homeless person's route. And there's clear authority to the effect-
What's the point?
Well, the point is, my lord, that in order to get a property, whether within twelve weeks or any period of time, one's got to manage-
Yeah, well, of course, of course, it's obvious.
But your lordship says to me, oh, well, I don't see this as related to management. I say-
No, I didn't, I didn't say that at all. I said I didn't understand what you meant.
Oh, I beg your pardon, my lord, I do beg your pardon. But I say-
But I think the broader point is not so much that as my lord's point, which is, your ground is that the judge was wrong to apply a test of impossibility or difficulty to have implied, of compliance in relation to her decision. The correct test was one that comes from, was whether they had been taking all reasonable steps to perform its duty, reference to Begum.
Yes.
Alternatively, that it was wrong considering that issue to consider the authority's part six stock relevant to the question of difficulty of compliance. That was the judge's point, that if necessary, you would have to go to your part six stock. Like that's para, whichever para it is. I don't see why, whether it's twelve weeks or six weeks, is relevant.
My lord, the point I'm making is touching upon the making of these orders at all. And the position in relation to that, as I've said, is that necessarily you get an arbitrary period of time which touches upon the management of the thing, of the housing stock. And Mr Justice Collins propounded a different approach in the Begum case, but you've seen the approach that Mrs Justice Stane provided for. And here, as I say-
Well, can you show us the bit that you say is wrong in Mrs Justice Stane's judgment?
Yes, if your lordship looks at-
It's three-two-one and three-two-two, isn't it? On this hypothesis, you would breach the duty sixteen months ago, given the construction of the letter, you knew sixteen months before that it was unsuitable, you had done nothing, and the judge thought that the twelve weeks was reasonable.
Yes, my lord, but there's also the other question which bears upon the approach to this form of relief as suggested by Mr Justice Collins, contrasted with Mrs Justice Stane. And there, in terms of what she was saying, if your lordships look at paragraphs sixty-four and sixty-five of our skeleton, you'll see that there there's a discussion about what can be seen from Mrs Stane, Mrs Justice Stane's judgment, her appreciation as to sort to avoid part six and straying into the realms of amending the housing policy. If you go back a page, you will see that the position is one whereby at paragraph three-two-one, she says, paragraph sixty of the skeleton, that she made a mandatory order because the authority had not contended it would be impossible. This evidence, the application of an impossibility test. She then proceeds to say she shouldn't consider it unreasonably difficult. Whereas if we look at paragraph sixty-one, the test is whether the authority has taken all reasonable steps, that was what-
Right, can we just strip out that case? The reason why I interrupted you was because you referred to the twelve week aspect.
Yes.
Can we ignore that? Your submission under ground three is not about whether it was twelve weeks or some other period of time. And no doubt you would regard twenty-four weeks as better and six weeks as worse, but the judge chose twelve weeks and there isn't a ground of appeal against that. Are we not really concerned with the point that you're making in the passages here, which is whether the judge applied the right test for granting a mandatory order at all?
My lord, yes, and-
Well, is that yes, yes, or yes, but?
It's yes, and I'm going to add that not undermining that positive affirmation that it's yes, she applied the wrong test, one should also think about, for example, the way in which these matters have been put by Mr Justice Collins there, in all reasonable steps, but also how the matter has been put when one looks at the learning on relief in judicial review, where one has to go to volume three of the authorities in order to see what my lord, Lord Justice Lewis, in his book on judicial remedies, has said. One, two.
What's the tab?
Tab is seventy-six.
Thank you.
And one, within, I'm not sure what the individual imagination is, but the second, the second page, two-forty of my lord's book, sidelined, your lordships will see, statutes may impose general obligations to provide services in the general public interest. Here the courts need to be acutely conscious that they don't usurp the role of the administrator by assuming the task of how resources are to be allocated as between competing claims. In practical terms, the situations in which the court will be able and willing to order a public body to perform its duty by ordering it to do a specific act will be infrequent.
Well, listen, I had a very modest ambition when I set out to ask you about the fourteen weeks. Spare my lord embarrassment, this has nothing to do with how long it should be given to a local authority if it's decided that a mandatory order is appropriate. At the moment, I'm anxious to understand your argument about why it is that the judge was wrong in principle to make a mandatory order. But at the moment, I'm finding this issue about how long she allowed a complete distraction.
Well, I apologize for that, my lord.
Because it's not.
Well, I-
And if it is a matter that's of importance, you know, what help did the judge have? What was she told by you that she should order if she decided to make a mandatory order? How many weeks or months? What was she asked to do by the other side? Otherwise, isn't she just left to produce a figure which actually seems to be the same as Miss Justice Linden produced or Croydon? In his case, newer minutes.
Well, I apologize if it's a distraction, my lord, and I put it then in that way on one side. And why I say she erred in the way in which she did is, first of all, for the very reason which is put down in the extract which I've just-
Before you deal with that, I mean, I'm familiar with that book, and the distinguished author, two paragraphs before that, had a heading, duties to do specific acts, and this is general obligations in statute to provide adequate schooling, so it's not actually the relevant section. But either to one side, it's bit unfair, it just happens to be a book I've read many times.
And frankly, even if it were the right, the right passage, I don't mean this rudely to my lord, there's certain general principles. What we're concerned with here is your grounds of appeal, and I wish we could focus on those.
Well, I do apologize, my lord, I can't help but observe that page two-four-one, six-oh-six-oh of the book is also of relevance. But my lord, as far as those grounds of appeal are-
Can we open the grounds of appeal, which are at page seventeen of the bundle? It seems to me that there are two grounds there, or rather, one ground divided into two alternatives. Paragraph nine is about what you call the judge applying a test of impossibility or difficulty of compliance. And there are two stages in that. First of all, to say what the correct test was, and you refer us to what Mr Justice Collins said in Begum, which we're not bound by, but let's assume for the moment it's right. And she was very well aware of that, we could go to it if we needed to in the authorities. But it's paragraph one-hundred-and-eighty-seven of the judge's judgment, maybe easier to go to. The court must always bear in mind, Parliament has decided the duty is unqualified and shouldn't be persuaded by alleged impossibility in finding suitable accommodation unless satisfied that all reasonable steps have been taken. Personally, that seems probably right to me, although I don't, I don't take a passage out of a judgment and say that that is the law, but let's assume for the moment that it is. Where did the judge depart from that? She simply found you hadn't taken all reasonable steps.
Well, my lord, what she said was not quite that, or rather, she said, and I'll be reminded, I think, of the paragraph number where-
Three-two-one and three-two-two.
Yeah, three-two-one.
Should, she's found there's a breach of duty, should she grant a mandatory order, she's not deterred from that because she doesn't think it would be possible to comply with it. If it were, she would not grant it. She doesn't think it would be unreasonably difficult, that's not a reason not to grant it. And then she says this, the council has done nothing to perform the section one-nine-three-two duty in his case, other than put his name on the planned moved list and wait.
So she's found you haven't taken all reasonable steps. So she's applied, you may say it was a wrong finding on the facts, but that's not your challenge, your challenge is she applied the wrong test, but I see no sign she applied the wrong test.
She's applied all three, in fact.
Do you have anything to say?
Well, my lord, yeah, I was looking back at three-one-six to three-one-seven. And three-one-six, claimants contend such relief should be ordered unless the council can show impossibility. And then discussion of what Mr Justice Collins said, and you've referred to that before, and then-
Which shows, by the way, that there isn't a distinct, you mean, all reasonable steps test or the impossibility test, that they are the same test. It's only impossible if you've taken all reasonable steps and still can't do it. So it's false dichotomy, but still, yes?
Well, that would be where matters rest, my lord. And it's not possible for me to draw out from here any further circumstances in terms of what is said. I, as I say, draw attention to the fact that, as I think was pleaded, that we indicated that this is the sort of order which shouldn't be made, but in terms of the grounds, as your lordship has there referred to, we have the difficulty, which I have to acknowledge as far as the impossibility and unreasonably difficult point. I don't know that I can say much more in connection with that, my lord.
What about para ten, the alternative reason?
I've got ten and a half grounds, my lord.
Yes, well, that's what this is, appeal is about. Yes, well, that's, that's what this is, appeal is about.
Yes, well, that was the point. The judge was wrong to consider the part six stock relevant to the question of difficulty of compliance.
Yes, you, you, what, what I understand you to be saying there is, you shouldn't look at the part six stock, or at any rate, it was not unreasonable not to. But on that point at least, Mr. Justice Collins in Bagram is bearing against you, isn't he? He says you should have to.
Well, yes, my lord, but then, Mr. Justice Collins also in Bagram says, please be careful to distinguish between part six and part seven. And part six housing allocation intended to be, um, its own pre-standing exercise in terms of the allocation of housing stock because of, um, the problem which has persisted for a number of years and has been sort of dealt with on a number of different occasions. The perceived problem of those who are homeless and jumping over those who are otherwise, so to speak, ordinarily on the list.
Well, you know this backwards, I only know what I've read for this case, so I'm very willing to be shown I'm wrong. But if you look at paragraph one eight five of the judge's judgment, where she quotes the passage, Mr. Justice Collins, tell me when you got there, paragraph one eight five, held the authority couldn't show to done all it could, adopted a policy which disabled it from any all possible accommodation available, had taken the view wrongly that accommodation for those owed the main housing duty could not come from its housing stock because, the authority thought, such stock was restricted to those persons being allocated permanent housing under part six. Collins, Mr. Justice Collins observed, I recognize this approach may justifiably be said to be likely to prejudice those seeking permanent accommodation from a council and to favor the homeless, but that is what Parliament has, in my judgment, intended. The duty to house the homeless, albeit temporarily, is unqualified. So I'm very willing to, you to say that's wrong, but I thought for a moment you were saying it wasn't what Mr. Justice Collins had said, but it is what he said, isn't it?
Well, that's what Mr. Justice Collins said, and the, the passage that I was referring to is to what Mr. Justice Collins said was the, um, reasonableness contrasted impossibility, but that's already been discussed.
Yes.
And, um, this is a, a different matter which bears upon, um, the housing stock and bears upon part six, contrary to part seven. And I've made the point, um, that, as Mr. Justice Collins says in that judgment, not there, um, recorded, but says in that judgment, you have to be careful to distinguish part six from-
You can't refer us to a bit of, we haven't even got the bit, where is the, what are you reciting from? You want to take us to the authority, or is it, is it quoted somewhere else in the judge's judgment?
I suspect it is, but Bagram is in the bundle certainly at- Volume one, twenty seven.
Yes, which was the passage you had in mind?
Lord, you will just give me a moment to-
Yes, of course.
And the lordship will find at page three hundred and eighty two.
Yes.
A passage beginning is in fact the second complete paragraph on this page at the top whole page. It is important to remember at all times of the duty-
Yes.
Part seven.
And isn't it more the second next paragraph, it's essential to bear in mind the duties of part six and part seven? Well, of course, but that, they are obviously separate, that's important, but I just wanted to check, that, that's not in the passage where he's suggesting remedy at all?
That's right, my lord, but, um, it, it nonetheless, um, remains the position, um, in my respectful submission, that one can perfectly sensibly, um, say to this court that those two parts should be viewed in that way, as Mr. Justice Collins indicates, and that thereby, when Mrs. Justice Stain seeks to secure reliance on the proposition as far as the part six is concerned, um, she is mistaken.
She's not mistaken, it's a matter of law, accommodation which would otherwise be used for secure tendencies under part six can be used as a matter of law for non-secure tendencies, uh, under part seven. You may not want to do that, but you can do it as a matter of law. She was well aware of that point, and at three one seven, she said, but I've got to remember the context that I'm dealing with, at the very last sentence of three one seven, is the context, jury, is there's an unqualified duty, as she had held it to be, with which you failed to comply. So yes, you've got a combination that could be part six, but you've also got a situation where Parliament has told you, do something, and the judge said, for sixteen months, you have done nothing. And it was in that context that she said she's going to make a mandatory order. And the question is, why is that wrong?
Well, my lord, I've indicated the submissions I make in connection with that. And I suspect I'm not going to get any further by either repetition or stress on those-
So just you shouldn't, if you can avoid it, use part six?
Yes, but, and bear in mind too, my lord, um, that for part six, um, where the scheme of priorities are allowed for, um, one can give within that to those who one puts there, um, a, a allocation for, um, those who otherwise are homeless. So tha- that's how that goes, but, um, this is, it all just goes to, in actual fact, again, back to, um, the exercise of what is going on here in terms of, um, the way in which Birmingham's housing is being managed, cared for, et cetera. And I say, as I've said before and on several occasions, that's in the hands of the city council.
Well, we've probably, as you say, taken that as far as we've-
Yes.
As we can, and we can come on to your fifth point, which is the functus point, is that right?
Yeah, the functus point is a point which goes as follows.
Sorry, just before you explain it, just so we can see how it fits in, this isn't actually an appeal against any decision that the judge made, is it?
No, because, I mean, the judge expressly said this wasn't necessary for her decision, and she went on, um, to consider this, um, particular matter.
Yes, and, and Mr. Justice Popplewell, or rather, Lord Justice Popplewell, when he gave permission, said that although it was obiter, it was an important point of law, which is convenient for us to give guidance on. That may be for us to decide, but, um-
It's not for me to say what's important and unimportant.
No, no, I wasn't meaning about the importance, but if it's obi-, i- i- if we have to deal with grounds of appeal against decisions made against you, we do not have to deal with things the judge said which aren't part of her decision. We may choose to, so I'm not stopping you, but I just wanted to put that up front.
Well, my lord, that's the point.
You accept that?
I completely accept that. This point I, um, suggest is remarkably easy to, um, consider and to state. Your lordship, or my lord, um, Lord Justice Peter Jackson was involved in a case which held that one can't go back on a determination that so-and-so is eligible for a particular, um, matter. We are here concerned with, um, the question of suitability in the context of a debate which necessarily involves, um, the passage of time and necessarily involves the idea, um, that what is suitable one day for family X may not be suitable the next day because two children have arrived or two children have left, whatever the circumstance may be. And we are concerned with a situation where, um, in the consideration of families who are homeless, um, the local housing authority will pay regard to, um, the question of suitability. And in making decisions about suitability, people affected are going to ask for reviews about such matter. The cases, as we've seen, um, all indicate, um, that suitability has this temporal aspect as well. And we say that it's completely illogical, um, to say that when one's dealing with a concept which is variable over time, um, one, if one happens to have decided unsuitability, is stuck with that for all time unless, um, one says, we're now going to make you an offer of this particular property, which is how the matter is put by the respondents. And so here, under the circumstance, I respectfully say it's just manifestly obvious that if a local housing authority have, how, ever the, whatever the mechanics may be, are dealing with a property which is thought, um, to be unsuitable because of overoccupation, i.e. ten people where only two people can fit in, eight people leave, why can't the local housing authority say, this is now suitable? That's all that this point is, and it is completely different from the kind of case that my lord was dealing with on eligibility, when one's concerned with what is the status of this person, um, where one, um, can determine that he is X or Y. And one's concerned with here, something over, operating over a period of time. And that's really that point, nothing else.
What you really are saying, it's not a question of eligibility, it's a question of how you perform your duty over time and as circumstances change. Nothing wrong with changing how you perform your duty to take account of the change.
Yeah, it's what John May Al Kane said, as facts change, he changes his opinion.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, and that's all, that's all it is, um, nothing else, there's nothing fancy, there's no fancy law as far as this is concerned, I'm afraid, my lords.
Yeah, we're delighted, Mr.-
Expecting to get that.
You haven't actually changed your mind yet, have you, on any of the four decision letters? You haven't gone back and said, I know we said it was unsuitable as the judge found, but it is in fact now suitable, you haven't actually done that yet?
No, I don't believe so, I don't believe that's the, is the position. I'm always slightly apprehensive in answering those questions too directly lest I get something wrong. But that's the point on functus.
Yep, well, that was very, very-
The judge didn't, she didn't decide it at two one, um, she, she left it, left it open. And your argument is that the the authority in relation to eligibility equivalent to this case would be if you had decided, having got into difficulties, to go back to one nine three one and remake your decision under the three criteria. That that would be something that would not be open to you.
Yeah, well, that's not what we've, that's not what we've done.
No, having decided that favorably to an applicant, you can't then change your mind about that.
Yeah, it's, it's exactly similar-
But that's quite, quite different from what we're concerned here.
Exactly similar to your lordship's decision, um, when your lordship decided that, um, the eligibility decision having been made, it couldn't be gone back on by the local planning authority, by the local authority, I beg your pardon.
Right, thank you.
So I leave that there, and that leads me to two, two matters. One of which is to touch upon the, uh, respondent's notice, and one of which is to touch upon the point about-
Well, my, if this would help, out of the, uh, menu you gave us at the beginning, the last item was waiver.
Yeah.
And I, unless you, obviously you can depart from your shopping list, but, or, menu, but that, that was what you were going to do now.
Absolutely, my lord, and what I propose to do in connection with that is to draw attention to, if I may, um, the skeleton argument in relation to the waiver point, um, which is at one oh eight, page one nine six and following. And-
Uh, sorry, your, your skeleton argument? I, I take it out of the bundle, but mine's pages nineteen to- What's, what skeleton argument are you referring to?
I'm so sorry.
This is at page, um, paragraph eighty two of your skeleton. Underground five, page thirty eight.
Yeah, I'm so sorry. Yes, I'm so sorry, um, yeah, that was my fault for looking at a false reference. Page thirty eight, paragraph, um, eighty two and following. And, uh, the essence of this point is, um, that we were concerned with events which happened some years before, um, the litigation took place, and which the council described, paragraph eighty four of the skeleton, by reference to what would have happened because so many years having passed, there was no individual recollection of the, um, circumstance. And then we had a situation whereby, um, the judge held that the fourth respondent, paragraph eighty six of the skeleton, had not chosen on a fully informed basis to give up his rights to temp, suitable temporary accommodation. And what this concerned was a exercise in saying, do you want to go into temporary accommodation, or do you want to stay where you are? Nothing, in a sense, more sophisticated, um, than that. And then, um, we have the circumstance whereby, um, Mrs. Justice Stain indicates that there were certain matters which ought to have been put to the fourth respondent, which is set out, I think, in her judgment at-
Well, the point is two nine four, I think, it's not points that should have been put, he was asked and said he didn't want temporary accommodation, but that was before the decision had been made on section one nine three, and he wasn't asked once he knew the full duty was owed. Do you want to go into temporary accommodation now or stay where you are? When he was asked that question at the interim stage, it was leaving the flat that he was in, going into section one eighty eight accommodation, and if the decision was against him, he'd be left without anything. And what she's saying is, it's one thing to ask it when that's the scenario, but once you've got the full duty owed to you, and it's a different question, do you want to stay where you are whilst you try and find somewhere? Or would you rather move into permanent accommodation, knowing that at some stage we've got to move you on into other accommodation? And that's what she's saying at two nine four, isn't it?
Yeah, yeah, well, there was a, a basic, um, choice to be made, namely whether he wanted to stay where he was or wanted to go into temporary accommodation.
After the decision on the full duty was taken.
Well, whatever the situation was, um, the position was one whereby, um, the choice was made by Mr. Al Shamiri, and, um, the evidence was all to, um, that effect.
No, I'm sorry, that's just not correct. The letter that was relied on in evidence showed that he was waived his right to temporary accommodation at a different stage, before the full duty, unless I've got the facts wrong. And that's what she's saying, because there's a difference when you're asked that question when the offer is section one eighty eight temporary accommodation, and when it's a one nine two situation, and it'll be something for a little while and permanent of some sort later.
Yes, my lord, but, um, the answer to your lordship's point is that your lordship in fact has to go back to see what the letter says-
Yes.
Um, rather than what, um, Mrs. Justice Stain recorded it as saying, and the letter is at-
It summarizes in paragraph two nine two. In case we don't need to go to it.
Yes.
The original.
You're saying her summary is wrong, are you?
Well, my lord, I
Can we have the, can we have the reference?
We better have the letter, I think, which is
Page five two four.
Mr. Nabi helped me tell us it's page five two four. Yes.
Oh, you can't, five two four in which bundle?
The core bundle.
The core bundle.
It's volume two of the core bundle.
So sorry, I'm in the wrong place.
Yes. And so the letter to Mr. Al Shamiri indicates that a decision has been made and that a duty is owed to make sure you have suitable accommodation. This is called, the council is satisfied you meet the following criteria. If we have already provided that same, any temporary accommodation under interim duty, that same accommodation will meet this new duty.
None of that is relevant, it's five two seven, I think, Mr. Straker, it's late in the afternoon, because that was a pro forma which didn't apply. And it's the bit that's four paragraphs down, you have agreed with the council to remain homeless at home rather than be placed in temporary accommodation. So he was told that and he agreed, that was before the decision was owed.
Before or concurrent with?
Not concurrent with, the decision, he's being told about the decision in this letter on the twenty-seventh of April. This is the letter that notifies him of the decision. This letter is referring to an earlier state of affairs when he was notified about one eighty-eight or discussing one eighty-eight accommodation. And that's when he said, I'd rather stay here than take the risk of going into temporary accommodation and things going pear-shaped if you decide against me in one nine two. I'm putting it into legal language, he wouldn't have said that, but that's the judge's point.
Yes, my lord, but the position is that, the position is there stated, and what he can or can't do is there also stated, and
No, you're not understanding my point, Mr. Straker. This is describing a state of affairs involving a different legal situation earlier. It's not describing a state of affairs that has been discussed in the context of the council having accepted the duty under one nine three.
Well, my lord, your lordship is ascribing to that a particular quality to this letter, which I would respectfully say simply indicates that what had come to be agreed in the light of what was happening, which included, even if one takes the position prior to this, the consideration of the prospective one nine three position, that he was saying, look, I'd rather be homeless at home than in temporary accommodation. And there are no doubts
Well, that's temporary accommodation, that's one eighty-eight accommodation.
Yes, well, no, not necessarily, because
That's how he would have understood it.
Well, my lord
This is for the judge to decide.
And she decided it.
Where, where does this point go? I think where it goes, you must tell me if I'm wrong, is that the declaration at para six of the order goes, is that right?
Yes, my lord.
And that's all?
That would be all.
Yeah.
That would be all.
So it's not, and it's completely case specific, it's hardly, I suppose it might have cross implications. But that's it, isn't it?
Well, it, it certainly doesn't bite on what is on any basis the important elements of this case, which we'll address earlier on today. My lord, as far as the other matter which your lordship touched upon right at the beginning of today, namely the respondent's notice. I respectfully say that that is really trying to treat with matters that I have developed earlier in the course of my submissions today. And I suspect that I'm not going to aid the court by embarking now in the two minutes or so left.
I don't know why you say two minutes, but
Well, my lord, I'm looking out of my glasses.
It might be seventeen minutes, but but if what you're saying is that at the moment you don't want to add anything, but you may reply, that's a perfectly reasonable position, which you wouldn't question.
That's what I would do. Well, my lord, that then, unless, as I say, I'm reminded from anything from left or right to add, is what I would wish to say in opening this case before this court. What I'm completely, I'm afraid unsure about in the light of your lordship's last remark is whether the brownie points were only referable to four fifteen or four thirty.
Ah, yes, well, you caught me now.
I might be left in a state, I suppose, of uncertainty overnight, you might, you might. Well, that's a point very well taken, if I may say so, Mr. Straker, if I'm not going to respond on it.
Well, I think time isn't brutal, is it, Mr. Nabi, you're going to be, you're going to have plenty of time tomorrow and need plenty of time for reply. You too may get brownie points if you're
I'll try my best, my lord.
Very well, we would say ten, ten thirty tomorrow. Thank you, Mr. Straker.
Thank you very much, my lord.